This is the regular meeting of the American Council of the Borough of Flemington for Monday, February 25, 2013. This meeting is being held in conform with the Yoga Public Heans Act. Go on, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I am the sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spengel. Mr. Velella. Ms. Fine. Here. Mr. Orman. He's away. Mr. Novick?
Here.
Mr. Greiner?
Here.
Moving on to number one on the agenda. First on the agenda is a presentation by the Hunter County Tricentennial Committee. And we have the senator, Senator Marsh Carroll.
Do we have any additions?
Yes, I guess we will do that before the presentation. If you want to do it after the presentation.
I think you should do it before, just in case anybody is waiting for those items that might get changed.
Yeah, that way.
No, no.
Okay. You have a few different changes to the agenda, so definitely make those adjustments.
Thank you. I'll make two. One is, I just saw the minutes today, and frankly, I don't think we all had enough time. So I'd like to move the minutes from the last meeting to table until the next meeting. Just any of us trying to provide any feedback. So that is item six, approval of minutes of regular meeting. I'd move that to table that to the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Oh, it's in the second to that?
Second.
Okay. Paul Rolfe. Mr. Spengel?
Yes.
Mr. Velella?
Yes.
Ms. Fine? Yes. Mr. Novick?
Yes.
Mr. Greiner?
Yes. Thank you. The next one that I'd like to suggest is, I would also like to move that to table item 14, which is Resolution 2013-48. The reason for this is that for about the past five years, this time, well, by the way, just for those out there, it is entitled "Recognizing the Significance of Paul Robeson and Black History Month." For about the last five years, the way we have handled these is by mayor's proclamation rather than council votes. And I think especially coming on the heels of the discussion we had the last time over the gun control stuff, about, you know, what kinds of things we feel we ought to be voting on. I would like to request that council just to have a discussion if we want to be taking these on as council votes as opposed to the mayor's proclamation. So I don't know if anyone else feels this way. I haven't been discussing it with anyone. But I'm going to make a motion that we table this until we can have that discussion.
Well, considering, can I speak to the motion?
Yes.
I have just a second.
Exactly.
Yeah. Second.
Okay. Let me just speak to the motion. Recognizing what Phil is saying here, the idea here is that Paul Robeson has had a very significant connection to Flemington. As a child, he was a student at the Children's Choir School in Flemington. So the fact that this is Black History Month, I thought it would be appropriate to recognize since February is Black History Month. So tabling this would take it out of Black History Month, which is February. So just in terms of timing, it would be appropriate to table it until March for that reason.
Could it be?
It's a good point, Senator.
I was going to say, I would, speaking as a mayor, would be willing to do it as a proclamation. It was submitted to me as a resolution. I didn't frankly think to ask Mr. Novick when it was submitted, and if he would prefer to have me do it as a proclamation. I certainly am willing. I don't know if it could be converted to a proclamation.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Could it be converted tonight to?
If the council wanted to convert it tonight to, you know, you wish your proclamation, and if that satisfies the council, I think that would be fine.
It's worth the same. I have no objection to that. It has the same action and significance I have a proclamation.
So you want to.
But I think it needs to be done this month because of. Oh, it does.
Yeah, it needs to be done tonight.
Point is, and this actually was brought to my attention during the tricentennial meeting, when we had a meeting at the Flemington Children's Choir School. So I thought it would be appropriate. But I have no problem if the process would be to draw the motion, to draw the resolution and have the mayor make the proclamation.
There's a motion now and a second to table this. If the movement and the second are agreeable to withdrawing the motion, then you can just do a motion to change it to a proclamation. And the council can do that, and then when we get to it, the mayor can just issue that proclamation.
So you withdraw the motion?
If the council is agreeable.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we need a motion to.
I move that we convert this, that be appropriate, to a mayor's proclamation from a resolution. I assume.
I second.
Okay. Paul Rolfe. Mr. Spengel?
Yes.
Mr. Velella?
Yes.
Ms. Fine? Yes. Mr. Novick?
Yes.
Mr. Greiner?
I'll second.
Okay. Then it will be done. As a proclamation. Okay. We have a couple of other adjustments to the.
So make a motion to table item number 15. That's ordinance 2013-1, establishing the licensing of coming operators in the borough of Flemington. I think there are just some additional amendments that need to be made to that. Table that.
It has no impact on anything that we're doing?
No.
And there's the number 19, you want to.
Yeah, I think you got to set one. Yeah, I think you got to set one.
So we have the same basis.
So by holding this off, it has no impact on certain statutes provided or anything like that?
No, it needs to be now.
Okay.
According to the borough attorney, it needs to be.
There are some statutory provisions that we.
Okay. So we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Spengel?
Yes.
Mr. Velella?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
Mr. Novick?
Yes.
Mr. Greiner?
Yes. I'm going to make a second motion to table item number 19, as ordinance 2013-5. It is an amendment to the Green Day ordinance. So I think I'll move that. Same situation, just need to add a couple additional items to table item number.
I'll second.
Mr. Spengel?
Yes.
Mr. Velella?
Yes.
Ms. Fine?
Yes.
Mr. Novick?
Yes.
Mr. Greiner?
Yes.
Okay. For Senator Carroll and County Administrator Yar.
We're all good? Bear, you're good?
I think so.
Mayor's in control.
She says we're good, we're good.
There aren't any choices, anyway.
All right. Thank you for having us tonight and getting us so early on your agenda. I'm here with County Administrator Cindy Yar. And Cindy's brainstorm was to go out to all 26 municipalities now and let everybody know what we're doing because we want the buy-in of municipalities. So this is our fourth week. The 11th municipality we've hit at the beginning of our fourth week. So we've been hitting three or four a week. So just to give you an update, the Freeholders by resolution in 2011 in the spring created an ad hoc subcommittee, an honorary committee, that was comprised of all of the former Freeholders, current legislators, and members of the Historical Society to come together and discuss activities, budget, whatever, for the 2014-300th birthday of the county. And from that meeting, I was made chair of that subcommittee. And the Freeholders asked us that by Christmas of 2011, to come back to them with ideas of the celebration we look like and what kind of money we were talking about and develop a budget. So by the end of 2011, one thing that we did know after creating a very rigorous calendar and also agreeing among ourselves that a birthday's importance of 300 shouldn't just be about fireworks and parades, it should be about leaving some important things behind, that it was better off if we went rogue from the Freeholders. So we broke away from them, announced it publicly, and didn't tell them first. And we formed a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit corporation. The corporate board is pretty familiar people. I chair the corporate board. Kathy McThicker, who is the president of the Board of Valley Community College, the chairman, is vice chair. Frank Fusso, former Freeholder, who is also vice president of PNC Bank is our treasurer. County Clerk Mary Melphy is our secretary. Guy Zapio, former county council for 27 years, is our corporate council. Freeholder Holt and County Administrator Yar serves, rounding us up to seven people. So we decided that it was really imperative that we take this away from the Freeholders for two reasons. Number one, it's easier to raise money if you're a not-for-profit because we're looking at raising and spending a quarter of a million dollars in 2014. And it's easier to spend money if you don't have to worry about politics. I mean frankly, everybody's in their very own dear time. And if you're talking about laying people off or hiring a composer to compose an overture for 100 and, it's really hard to justify that to the public and to the people you're laying off. So we thought it was best for everybody if we broke away. The Freeholders, I guess, agreed because they never said anything about it. And they've been great partners with us ever since. So they gave us, well, they lent us for the next couple of years, the choir school on Porster Place in Flemington as our headquarters. We now have it manned every weekend. It's open from 10 to 2 with volunteers. We have about 60 volunteers, of which about 45 of them are very active. We have planned about 50 to 60 activities that include tours, lectures, tavern tours, meals, historic meals, fireworks parade, a parade flow for every parade, a Lenny Winoffi encampment, Civil War reenactments, a whole week on Lindbergh here in the borough. And we still have a lot of calendar dates left. And then on top of that, we've got somewhere between 60 and 70 lectures planned. About half of them are booked. There'll be a family lecture group, there'll be a major series lecture. So there, you know, there's just a tremendous amount of stuff. There'll be one major activity every month, some minor activities as well. And then the lectures will be at least two lectures, I'm sorry, at least four lectures every month through the whole year. So it's busy, busy. We're still looking for lots of volunteers. 2013 is our year to get the word out and also raise money. I'm not here to raise money for the year. We've already been very generous. The borough, as the borough knows, Dan Campanelli, who's a pretty famous artist, a very popular collector who paints beautiful, beautiful historical buildings and other structures, came to us and said, "A lot of people have asked me to paint this one thing for them, and I've always turned them down. And I'm offering it to you exclusively, and that is the Hunter County Historical Courthouse." And we gladly took him up on the offer to paint the courthouse for us. We are raising money to buy the original as part of the deal. And we are printing, as you know, an exclusive run of 300 prints. We're de-restricting that image. We might put it on some other things this year, and then no one will be able to use that image probably for 100 years. Former Castleman Mark Hain stopped me one night and said, "I saw this guy painting out on the street, and he said, 'If I want one of these, I gotta talk to you, and can the borough buy number one?'" And I said, "Oh, number one, we're thinking we're going to also donate that to the county for another building." But Flemington Borough has secured number two. It is yours. I'm very happy to tell you, and if this county for some reason says they don't want number one, number one is yours. As the county seat, I think that's totally appropriate. It's also appropriate that you put George back up there because one of the things that we want to shout out loud and clear in 2014 is that that happened in Hunter County. It was not Mercer County in 2017, '76. Washington crossed the Delaware, made his speech in Trenton, and the battle of Trenton was led and won in Hunter County. So it is New Jersey's 350th anniversary, the same time it's our 300th. I'm sure they're going to be out there parading the Revolutionary War everywhere, but we will be parading the fact that it was the most important battles for Hunter and not someplace else. So I'm happy to see him back.
We are also planning, the dress rehearsal of the crossing is a week, almost two weeks before Christmas. God bless you. They usually have the crossing Christmas Day. Well, a lot of people are busy that day.
We're planning an outing of some sort.
So we're going to have an outing.
But we're planning, I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on, and we're, you know, we're doing a lot of things that we want the community very involved. Fundraisers include Walter Petrowski, the famous photographer.
This is where I come in. I hold up the books.
Most of you have seen this book, many of you have it. Walter also picked us, and he's doing a commemorative for us called Hunter in My Heart. We are going to be pre-selling that starting in March. We'll be pre-selling it and announcing the pre-sell price. And so that's another fundraiser we're doing. We're doing Dan's print. Dan's doing several prints for Dan Campanelli in order to do the things that we want to do, which includes a composition of music. We already commissioned a mural, a three-part mural of historical events in Hunter County by Paul Janis, who is a portraer, and he's got one of the governor's portraits in the state house, was painted by him. So, you know, these aren't shadowy artists that we're commissioning. And Cindy is putting together a fundraiser. We're hoping to get all of the volunteer fire companies and rescue squads to do a chili bake-off this fall. Who's got the best chili and use it as a fundraiser, to get the fire companies involved. Our parade is going to be March 22nd, mayor, if we, you know, we're going to, next year. That's our actual birthday. Actual anniversary of the signing by passing of the act, the act itself that made us a county is March 22nd. So we're hoping to do a huge parade that day in downtown. Only locals, no outside entertainment at all.
Marsha, do you guys have a website?
We do. The website is, we're publicly beta-ing it. We're not, we're letting people see it as being built. As right now, there's a lot of like wrong, mushy information on it, but we are, we do have it public. It's www.hunterand300.org. Or you can go right to the county's website, and it's the main link on the front page of the county site. Like I said, it changes every day. Things come down and things go up because it's, like I said, it's in total beta, and we're doing it live. I also want to just tell you that, you know, as the names of that corporate board, you know, there were things that we did when we formed. One is we had a blow-up date. We blow ourselves up a couple of years after the tricentennial, after we know everything's been taken care of, all liability and whatever is taken care of. That was one of our first resolutions. Number two is, we will not spend any more money than is currently encumbered in the bank. So if we closed down tomorrow, we'd be able to pay all of our bills. That was very, very important to us. Number three is, at the end of the tricentennial, within the first six months of 2015, we are having ourselves publicly audited so that the public knows how all of the money was raised and spent. And we thought that was important because even though we are not a body politic, it's a couple of celebration and we're asking for a lot of money from the public. One of the other fundraisers that we're doing is this nifty car magnet, Euro-style, $10. I brought a whole bunch in case anybody wants them. But we're not really here for mine. We really are here for, to ask for an official liaison.
I'm going to talk about the schools.
Oh, go ahead. Talk about the schools. Don't do the asks.
Well, first of all, at the chili bake-off, I am on the board of directors of the Hunter Developmental Center, and I have commissioned the clients to make bowls in their fine arts department. They will be stamped that 300, Hunter County, 300 years, 1714 to 2014. And we'll be selling these bowls at the bake-off. You'll get the bowl, and then you obviously taste all the, you know.
First 300 people.
So anyway, this, but this is, I mean, again, the Hunter Developmental Center is very much a part of our community, and so we are looking for every part of the community to be involved. The other thing that I usually interrupt, Marsha, when we get to the part about is the schools. It's been, I guess, a longstanding issue that the Historical Society or Culture and Heritage have been trying to get the schools to participate in Hunter County, in communities, you know, they have the essay contests, and we broke the barrier. And I am so thrilled, and as a matter of fact, I don't have it. But in 1976, a Hunter County Democrat, celebrating their 150th anniversary, as well as the bicentennial, published that, I'm sure you remember, it's a big book, right? And it's about our Hunter County and our community's involvement in the revolution. And I started, I met with the superintendent of schools and some teachers that come to Hunter County every year because the third, fourth graders learn about Hunter County. And they have come on board to get to the youngsters. We get to all the classes, but we're going to, and that's another thing I usually interrupt, Marsha. The Freeholders have agreed to wear costumes, period clothing. And I am renting them.
This is the real reason why George be looking.
That's what I said.
Wow. I am renting the costumes for the year. And I have asked them every opportunity that they can, I'm going to put them in their costumes.
Personally?
And, no, no.
Oh, you promised. Wow. This is her.
This is my thing. So what's happening is, in September, all the schools are on board. And we're working with a fabulous group of people who are real shakers and movers. And we, the project that we have selected for the schools are a timeline. And so in September of 2013, one or more Freeholders will be in costume and will go into each school and challenge the third and fourth grades to participate in this timeline. And they have to, and as a matter of fact, I mean, I have been a public employee for 40 years. And when I sat with the teachers and the superintendent of school, I again was reminded about core curriculum, and they were having a great deal of dialogue. Well, how are you going to make this, you know, part of the core curriculum? And there has to be credible research, and they have to document their research. And that's one of the things the committee said to me was, well, we need a municipal liaison. We need to know that these classes can call the municipality and say, could somebody come and speak to us or help us do research? So meanwhile, as we got this big thing, this big book from the Hunter County Democrat, I had called Terry Wright, who happens to also be in this book, which I have, oh, I have one in my car, so I'll be able to bring one in. But anyway, we're bringing one to every municipality. But I said, you know, this would be great. We need to get them to the municipalities, we need to get them to the kids in the schools so that they can see, because it talks about every community. And Mr. John Cool, right, Mr. John Cool, said to me, "Well, I'll see if I can find some, Cindy, but I don't know." Well, then he called me, he said, "Cindy, I found 2,000 of them." In a barn. In a barn. Because I said, "In the middle of the night, I'm going to make these copies of this. Everybody needs to see this, you know, it talks about our community." And he said, "Well, you can have them as long as I know what you're going to do with them." And I said, "Well, I can tell you that I'm going to put them to bear use, then, sitting in somebody's barn." You know, they've been sitting in there since 1976. So anyway, so we are bringing one to every municipality. They're going to be getting to the schools. The kids are going to be, the Freeholders are going to go in, "Hear ye, hear ye." We're going to try to get a town crier and, you know, and challenge them to have this timeline. The superintendent from Kingwood said, "You know, we did something in Frenchtown," and I don't know if you see the principal there, and he said, "We could do a documentary. We'll go into the schools and see," you know, so that every school will be talking about and researching the significant people from their community, not, you know, the one that everybody may talk about, or, you know. So we're going to be leaving tonight, I hope, with someone who was a liaison, number one. And Joey's.
Well, Joey's a member of the committee. But I had asked Elaine Orman about being the official, and she invited me to come to the Historical Commission and speak. But I haven't gotten back here on dates, but Cindy's got my calendar up in air until like almost the beginning of April. So, you know, I know she's not here tonight because I know she wouldn't have been here, but she was. But. Well, the more the merrier. Yeah, we don't turn down anybody who wants to be a volunteer. Let me make that clear. We do meet twice a month, and this is an ask for Rick. The last article, which appeared, I guess, a couple of days ago, yesterday in Democrat Online, has that we meet on the third Wednesday of each month. We don't. We meet on the second Wednesday of each month and also on the fourth Saturday in the morning. So we meet, we meet the second Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. sharp at the choir school. And we meet from 9:00 to 11:00 on the fourth Saturday at the choir school. That's starting in March. That's the calendar going forward for at least the next few months.
Say that again.
Sure. Second Wednesday from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., guaranteed, the meeting ends at 9:00 p.m. Joey will attest to that.
I will.
And then the fourth Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the choir school. And we have open hours from 10:00 to 2:00 every Saturday at the choir school now.
I can tell them. Go ahead, tell them. I'm so excited about the whole educational piece because I'm so happy that we're getting the schools involved. We're also doing like a far side calendar, but not with far side, you know, things on it. But it's going to be fun facts, 300 fun facts for, well, for anybody to have. But the schools have also agreed that they are going to be announcing every day on their PA what the fun fact for the day is, so that every youngster in every school will be hearing what the fun fact is. As a matter of fact, we've been proofreading them. We have them here. Culture and Heritage and the Historical Society has given them to us, so.
Some of them are a little racy, we're picking them out because it's for kids.
But anyway.
Not in Hunter County.
But anyway, there are, you know, just like that book that.
No version of it.
Just like the book that the Democrat published in 1976. You know, I'm, not that it matters. I'm 61 years old, but I've lived in Hunter County all but four years of my life. And I took that book home that night on January 29th when we met, and I was, I was just amazed. I was amazed. I mean, as I said, I've gone to many, many different schools here. When we were in Leavenham Borough the other night, I can remember doing civil defense drills in first and second grade when I was there. And it's, I'm just so excited that the schools are involved. We're looking to the high schools to maybe have their thespian groups do reenactments or come in again. You know, I mean, there's a lot going on, and the schools are, you know, I'm nurturing that whole relationship because, you know, I mean, we're not going to be here for.
And her question working on is going to meet curriculum standards, which is really important. So it could get credit for it. But we are looking for lots of volunteers because we need to have a lot of bodies. We need to man the fair. We need to keep the place open. We have community days. Dear Pep, the concert series, we'll be having a table there every Thursday night. Next year, we're taking over the concert series. And we've pretty much hijacked everything the county does for 2014. So it's just a lot of manpower, plus just doing the logistics of all these events, you know, making sure we have people and everything, staging parades, whatever it is with the float. We just need a lot of bodies. And so we're here for that. We're here for you to talk to Elaine about an official liaison, you know. I mean, it doesn't have to be somebody there, it could be Joey. It doesn't matter to us. We just need somebody that is the official body for Cindy, especially with the school district. And then finally, and you're probably not the right body, it probably is sort of the historical group, but we are looking for an official event, an official event. There's going to be a lot of events here in the borough, I hope, but an official one that's your event. We're asking all 26 municipalities to have an official event on our calendar. And it needs to hopefully work with us on our calendar because the calendar, like May and April now, are completely booked solid, and people keep wanting more dates. And I've frozen, I have frozen April and May right now, like we're bursting at the seams, but we have tons of dates in other months. So, you know, it could be, you know, a historical walking tour. I did talk to the architect.
Chris Griggs.
Thank you. Chris McCalabot, doing at least one lecture on architecture in Hunter. And I'm thinking a second lecture on architecture just from Flemington, maybe he's been doing a walking tour. But we are looking for something official that we can say, "This is Flemington's event," so that we have all of, all, you know, because this isn't my party and it's not Cindy's party. It's our party, you know, it's our birthday party, and we want everybody involved and as many people as possible. So the events aren't, you know, yes, there are going to be some stodgy historical, you know, real hardcore history, but there's also, we're hoping to have a scavenger hunt and geocaching in the parks and a ice cream social for teenagers and tweenagers.
A 5K run.
A 5K, well, we'll see if that happens. But that's a fundraiser.
Mr. Holt and I are on that committee, and that's, we haven't been doing it too well.
But, you know, we're just hoping to get every age group involved and everybody involved and have enough activities that people want to participate in at least something for their history here, so.
Well, we have Samuel Fleming Castle, we have a museum in Castle, maybe there's something.
Well, there is a museum, we have two weekends where we're asking every local museum to be open. I did not bring the calendar tonight, but we have somebody who is coordinating all the little museums to be open back-to-back weekends so that people can go all over the county knowing these museums are all open. So.
And just to let you know, I'm the, to Samuel Fleming House, we spoke about that at our last meeting, which we discussed what extra programs might have in, maybe storytelling, maybe some reenactor, maybe bringing someone in involving high school theater. maybe some reenactor, maybe some, bringing someone in, involving a high school theater group in some way, so we haven't discussed some possibilities that-
Is there something we can do on the website, I mean, can we link up to-
And that's what we're asking, we're asking to link up.
That's the final answer, because we would love to have the municipality link into our calendar, so that people can find you too. So we're working on that too, so that's, that's coming.
Do we have, do we have any space on the newsletter? I don't know how it's coming right now, is there some, do we have a little, do we have some space?
We can squeeze in a reminder.
Can we get, can we get back to the newsletters?
Oh, you can get back, you have time to get on the calendar, here's-
No, 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 we have, we have a newsletter that's-
Oh, okay, okay.
-out to the community. This is gonna go out in the next couple of weeks or so.
As far as long.
And, no, well, I'm thinking maybe there's some, yeah, maybe if you would like to give us, I don't know how much space we have, you're gonna have to tell us what you can do, maybe we could put something in that newsletter.
I'll give you my flyer, and you can feel free to edit it, I'm also giving you, I don't think you guys have the Blue Skies tear sheet, which is the courthouse tear sheet with the painting, so, yeah, thank you. The only other thing I wanted to tell you is that October first, we're hoping to have the entire calendar filled, that's my freezing date. Danny Capenelli, among the, he's doing several fundraisers for us besides Blue Skies, but out of his generosity, and he is extremely generous to us, he is, he has created a very large poster with twenty historical structures from Hunter County, representing seventeen different municipalities, and it's gonna be a commemorative giveaway. He's putting our entire calendar, every, every event, place and time, on this calendar after October first, and we are printing up twenty-five thousand of them to give away to the public for free. We're asking each municipality if we can give you a hundred of them for people who, you know, don't go to the libraries, or, you know, don't necessarily get out, but they'll be mostly supermarkets, Ken Clark, the major libraries, and the Freetholders Building, plus the twenty-six municipalities, we want each one, each municipality to get at least a hundred, so that they can give them out to people who just walk in to get dog licenses or whatever.
Sure, that'd be great.
So that way, we'll get it out to at least twenty-five thousand people directly, we'll have, hopefully, hang it on their wall, and they'll be able to see all the events we're gonna be doing for the year, or at least most of them at that point. So, yeah, so that's, you know, that's what we're doing. Lindbergh Week is the last weekend of April to the first weekend of May in 2014, we're gonna hopefully do two weekends of house tours, and a series of lectures, and then we're bringing up a one-man show from Florida who does Lindbergh reenactment, that's amazing. And it's gonna be at the Historical Courthouse, he is tailoring the show for us, I've seen it, and it's, so he's rewriting the introduction and the section in the courthouse to be more present, because it's gonna be there. So that's really exciting too, so, that's it. Unless you have any questions for us, and unless anybody wants a ten-dollar magnet.
I do have a follow-up question, I know Cindy had sent a letter about banners.
Oh, yes, 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 I have, thank you for reminding us. We had once, you were one of them, there were about six or seven people, municipalities that were interested in the banners. We're still trying to coordinate, because we're not asking the municipalities to pay for them, we're trying to find sponsors.
We have coordinated banner among all of the smaller municipalities that have Main Streets, we don't know, I mean, we're talking about a sizable amount of money that has to be raised for this, but it's on our list of things to try to raise money for.
David Rook, the executive director of Flemington Business Improvement District is here, and-
Maybe we can talk to him.
I have talked to him about this, and he, they're interested in-
Yes, I mean, we, we're just about ready to publish our directory, I was proofreading it tonight before I got here, and on the front of the directory is going to be the picture of the municipalities of, I guess nineteen thirty-one was the last municipality that organized, but we're gonna have that, it hangs in the freemolder room, the most recent of, you know, present. And then on the inside cover, we're gonna have all of the municipalities listed and when they organized. So, and on the bottom of it, it's going to say, you know, Hunter County celebrating three hundred years, because we're gonna get some mileage out of it this year, as well as next year, but we're hoping the same thing for the banners, so that if, if, you know, Main Streets in Hunter County wanna put up a banner that says Hunter County, three hundred years, or, you know, celebrating three hundred years, you can, I mean, I know there are certain times that either the snowflakes go off, or people have other things that go up, but, I mean, we could get some mileage out of it, and we would certainly love to speak to the idea, because I, and you were very, very, thank you so much, because I'm your thing, and you said, let's, you know, that would be a great thing to talk to the idea about. But we really wanna make that happen, but we're also, I mean, we're trying, as Marcia said, we're trying to raise a lot of money, and so we, you know, we have to pick and choose, you know, and so, but I, that was my idea also, the education, was get the banners up on Main Streets, you know, where people are, to help, you know, bring it all together. So, I'm gonna go out to the car and get the, the book for you.
Okay, super, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're excited about everything you've said, there's so much going on, it's, it is, it's awesome.
It's too bad you're not, it's too bad the two of you aren't that excited about this.
Right, right, right. All right. So, we should take, like, you know, you don't make water, you don't change the camera. It's so great, it's so great. Okay, we could also, yeah, we, you know, we are nationally, we're having, yes, no, yes, great.
You want what you're getting, hold it. All right, thank you, you're in. Great. You want a napkin? All right. All right, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. All right. We're going to, I think I should see, I think I should see. We're going to move on, thank you again, Marcia.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you very much for the time, we'll probably be doing this again at some point, when the painting comes in, we'll be handing it over again.
Marcia.
All right, Barry.
Barry's in.
Barry's in. Proud, proud Hunter, wants it in Hunter, but at one point Somerset was Hunter too, so it's okay.
He's from, he's from-
I'm from, yeah.
Are you?
Yeah.
I'm from Somerset.
No, I lived in Bridgewater twenty years ago.
Maybe that's why, well, I know it was like that long, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to number two on the agenda, is an update from the Flemington Business Improvement District, courtesy of Dave Rook.
Do you have to get that? Is there anyone?
Come on.
Thank you first off to Mayor Council for a lot, and I'm sure everybody's been going through it, I was sick last time I was supposed to be here, so I apologize. Couple things, three big things that are going on, and then we'll finish up with some fun stuff. Streetscape, Performing Arts Center, and parking situation. We'll start with Streetscape first. Some of you may have heard that the bid has commissioned Major Consulting, engineer and landscape architect to come in and look over Flemington's Main Street and all the connecting roads to it, in an effort called Main Street Extended, to basically design and formulate a Streetscape plan that if and when money's become available for this type of capital project, we have a shovel-ready plan, and the emphasis is on shovel-ready. We'll know exactly how much each block will cost, we'll know how many blocks we can do based on how much grant money we can obtain. We really appreciate the work that the borough has been giving us with cooperation from the municipal engineer, and this is one of those things, that this is an opportunity for the bid, to utilize its resources, but provide a tool for the borough. Most likely, it will be that way. It'll be an opportunity for the borough to obtain some grant monies through the parking transportation, or some, some means along those lines, where you'll be able to apply and use the shovel-ready project that we helped get for you guys, and hopefully, we get a bunch of money, and we start making the streets, and I'd like to say, a lot better in terms of continuity, but also in terms of safety. The Streetscape will encompass street lighting, pedestrian lighting, better access for handicap accessibility, ADA compliance, and a big thing for us is really trying to take that theme, the Main Street Extended, taking the look and feel of the Main Street and extending it down Rayville, extending it down Church, because unfortunately, we can't physically block Main Street on, right next to thirty-one, but that's where everybody drives. So if we could figure out a way to invite them by the way of having the same elements, street lamps, sidewalks, butt right up against thirty-one, hopefully, people will be, oh, this is really inviting, let's, let's make a right, or make a left, depending where you're coming from. So that's the Streetscape, we hope to have that plan in place, presented, we'd love to do a presentation for you guys. We're thinking we're gonna get it in-house in April, so maybe sometime in May, we can, we could share that with you guys, because as I said, it'll probably reside on our shelves and your shelves, and hopefully, for that day when some grant money comes our way. Next thing is Performing Arts Center, and really just want to briefly touch on it, and Phil had talked about it in the work session, we had last week sent an email out talking about the Downtown Performing Arts Center group, and really, it was a, it was really an introductory piece, just to say that the bid has been talking with them from the very start, and Phil and Mark, when he was on council, were involved from the start. I make it a point, I think I talk to Jamie probably once a week, the executive director from the Downtown Performing Arts Center, they have their funding, things that they, challenges that they have to go through, the borough has their initiatives to go through to, to, you know, work on the best way to handle that building, but from our standpoint, it really boils down to one thing, making Flemington a des- making Flemington a destination.
That's all right.
It's all good.
Include those banners in that talk.
Really making Flemington a destination, and we just heard about county activities, it would be a first in the county, it really makes us a destination for performing arts. So, again, if it's not Downtown Performing Arts Center, if it's not even that building, it is still a priority of the bid to try to fully realize that potential of a performing arts center, or some sort of performing arts component here, to make Flemington a destination. So, again, that email was an introduction to who they are, if for some reason, again, that's not the group, we'll hopefully send another introduction about somebody else that's interested. Next thing is parking. The council and the mayor, who sits on the board as well of the bid, had, I think, maybe about a year ago, year and a half ago, introduced to us that you guys were kicking around the idea of doing some parking changes with the amount of time permitted for the various areas of Main Street and the back parking lots. We were just getting involved with our street, with our market study and a bunch of other things, and so now that that's all come to be, we're ready to start looking at this, at this situation. What I'd like to say is that in about a week's time, a week to ten days, we're going to be issuing a survey, electronic and hard copy survey that'll appear in the paper, we'll send it to the Democrat. Thank you. And it's an opportunity, it's really, it's, the electronic version will guide you two different ways. If you're a business owner or an employee, when you click on and saying that's how you identify yourself, you'll be sent to a different set of questions, really based off of your business practices, you know, when are you there, when are your employees there, are you finding it difficult to bar? And then if you say that you're a resident, or more often identify yourself as a customer of the borough, you'll get another set of questions that will be more geared towards that. How often do you come, why do you come, what is the thing you do most here? So we're gonna couple that with, we're gonna ask the chief for some traffic information that he has, and put it all together and make some recommendations, and maybe it might be something as simple as just the way it's enforced, it might be a timing issue of two hours, four hours, there's a bunch of different possibilities, but we're really gonna take our time and look through it, but hopefully, have something back to you guys in the next month or two. So that's, if you see that, please encourage folks to take the survey, and the more responses we get, the sample size grows, and hopefully, we have a better indication of what, what it is we can do. Couple fun things now, always like to, every time we talk, I like to talk about recruitment, and I think we could probably say that, I really feel 2013 is gonna be that year where we're gonna get almost ninety-five percent occupancy on, on Main Street. We're happy to say seventy-eight Main, has Yellowfinch now, the comic bookstore that relocated is getting a tenant, the corner spot by where my office is on the corner of Main and mine, now has a photographer moving in. We did talk to the, to the Grill Shack, they hope that they're going to be opening in the next week or two, which would make my life so much easier, so close. So I really feel very confident. The McCasa Space, Ninety-nine, Post Office Building, and again, aside from Cut Glass, the hotel and the Agway site, those three that I first mentioned are the ones that we hope to really address in 2013, and we are going to be instituting something where we're, and Joey, you were there for that meeting, and Phil and Erica, you, we're going to do hopefully some art displays, or various displays in the windows, just to at least make those, those units that are vacant currently look like something, a little bit more pleasing, especially in light of, you know, twenty-fourteen being the three-hundredth anniversary, it'll really look good if our Main Street at least looks filled up. So that's our plans for recruitment. And then for events, we're gonna finish up the winter months and kick things off in March. March thirtieth will be our first event for the bid, it'll be a Easter event, we're gonna team up with Liberty Village and Main Street and combine a whole Easter theme, we're gonna do Easter egg hunt over at Liberty Village, we're gonna add a Easter bonnet parade down onto Main Street, complete with judging, we're gonna do lunch with the Easter bunny, it's gonna be a whole deal on, on March, so why, what's it gonna happen?
No, I think that's great.
Ah, really? Easter bunny's coming to town, man.
I think there's a bonnet parade.
Easter bonnet parade, why not, right?
That's gonna be great.
All right, you know why we're having an Easter bonnet parade too. No, it's gonna be a lot of fun, we're excited for that. Then we're gonna kick into April with the Restaurant Week, first time we're gonna be doing that. We're gonna get some great support, Matt is here from Matt's Wood Rooster, he was in a meeting this morning with us, giving us some insight of how we can really make a really exciting Restaurant Week, that'll be April seventh through the thirteenth. What's nice about this is the proceeds from the event, there's gonna be a little bit of a donation component from the businesses, that's what's gonna fund our first-ever bid scholarship, that'll be awarded in June to a graduating, two graduating seniors, a grown boy from Hunter and Central High Schools, so we're very excited for that. And then we're gonna finish up April with sidewalk sale, on April twenty-seventh, we're gonna give you more details about that, but I think what we're gonna try to do is have sidewalk sales for each of our areas, Main Street, Liberty Village, Hunter Shopping Center, and Shops of Flemington, and we're thinking about some creative ways to get shoppers around, maybe a trolley, or some way to get you moving around the borough and enjoying sidewalk sales and getting that cabin fever and getting out, so. So there's an update for you. All right. Any questions?
I have a comment, I would like to thank you for putting, for fixing that sign in front of the hotel.
Oh, yeah.
That sign, it looks great, it's, it was well done, and every time I walk past it, I can look and see what events are going on now, so, you know, we asked if you would do that, and you guys came through, and it looks very good, thank you.
We're gonna get some positive comments about it, and we're looking to budget some money to, to put those in other places. We used to have a lot more than I think we do now, I know there's still one across from Flemington First, but we're looking to put two over at Liberty Village, one at Hunter Shopping Center, one in Shops of Flemington, and two more on Main Street, and the same concept, they're just display boards, we'll use them to promote upcoming events, if there's no event going on, maybe we'll promote, you know, a featured business, a variety of different things, so they're just a way to get the word out. Anything else?
Great.
I'm gonna try to go grab the county folks, so, if you don't see me.
They won't have gone far, they're straight.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, moving on to number three on the agenda, our public comments, the first public comment session of the evening, who would like to go first, Mr. Shore?
Officer Shore, Forty-Seventh Broad Street. Number nineteen on the, number sixty on the agenda, feels the reading, the search duty and warning, non-exclusive franchise, non-federal data, abuse of women, abortion of Earl, women's public rights, of way, both purposes of telecommunications transmission service. And under David just spoke about laser engineering, I think you slipped that, I was out in the hall there for a bit, but one component of the work you're doing is looking at, you know, providing a means for us to supply high-speed internet around this town. The reason for this is because it's the desire of the business of recruitment and pension subcommittee to do whatever we can to attract business into this town, and one of the things is actually making our town have the best of the best when it comes to internet access. This says, a non-exclusive franchise, the issue I have with that is, A, they- with that is, A, they could be a potential competitor to whatever we decide we want to do, firstly. And secondly, it, by virtue of having them, you're excluding others. Let me explain. On phone poles, if you want to go on a phone pole, we already have a cable company there, there's a power company, we have the telephone company. There are all sorts of regulations as to where or how you can put other services on telephone poles. If you're going in the ground, how far you have to be from other utilities and other services. So you may say it's non-exclusive, but by, by just having it, you're excluding others from doing it.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I can speak to that. Would you like me to speak to that? It won't, it won't take up your three-minute time, okay?
No, of course.
All right. Well, I'll speak to it quickly. The, they are just, they are running this cable right past our town. They're clipping our town for maybe about 100 feet, maybe, at most, at Rayville Avenue. They're just clipping across, and they're running these cables to some other communities. So nothing is going into our town. Nothing's terminating here. Nothing's really stopping. It just so happens that the way the route is going through, it touches one of our poles. And therefore, we have to give them that, we have to go ahead and give them that proof. You know, that permission, and we have to review this ordinance here. So there is nothing here that's being done in our town.
That's great. I wanted to put it out there for confirmation reasons.
For information, yeah.
You need to know that. And I would suggest that this order is identifying exactly where you're giving them access to.
It does. Very specific.
Yeah.
Robert, if you want, I can show you a copy of it.
Sure.
Well, it's like a backflip. I highlighted actually the area.
This is Stewart.
That was Stewart, 26 Spring Street. A couple things. I was wondering, if someone did tell me the number of overcrowding inspections that was done in the year 2012, how many times did the inspector have to go to an hour?
I don't know, but I can get it for you. I will.
And then I wanted to bring out, which I bring out every year, the music on Main Street. You heard Marsha Caro talk about that they're going to be commandeering whatever the county's gonna be doing in 2014, including the music up at UPA. And as you know, they do theirs on Thursday night. And I have asked many times to have the hours on a different night. And I'm asking again. I just think it is absolutely ridiculous for us to spend money on the same night with the county. Well, they don't spend money. They get theirs for free. And so I would ask that we start this year. The county has already announced their program. They've already announced the dates. They've announced their performers with the exception of Juan. They're looking for one additional treaty. And so, you know, I just think that it is something that needs your serious consideration, that we would change it possibly to a Wednesday night, because I understand that you can get better bands for less money on Wednesday night. And so again, I'm asking you to change music on Main Street to a different night. It would not be competitive.
Thank you. Who's next, please? Anybody else?
Oh.
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeremy Coots, 58 Broad Street. I just wanted to thank council for introducing this resolution supporting our rail project. And I particularly want to thank Brian's wife and her group for bringing it forward. Are we gonna have comment during that resolution?
I, I don't know.
Typically not comment on resolution.
Typically not, unless, unless there's something that's in, that he's discussing among the council members. Don't anticipate it.
Our, the reason behind this is, is really straightforward. At some time, we were proposing arc tunnels, you know, to expand capacity from New Jersey into Manhattan. That project was canceled, but the locomotives were purchased. So now it's really just a question of where those trains are gonna be allocated. And so since our project is an extension of the Raritan Valley Line, we just want to make sure that we get some of those locomotives. So it's not a money issue. The money's already been spent. And so it's just a tremendous advantage for the Raritan Valley Line. And it's gonna help communities all along that way. So that's all that is to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim.
Tim Hester, Vanelle Street. I know you guys are in doing 19 this week.
Correct.
But when you do get around to it, I would appreciate it if the police chief could be here, because I think some questions about security.
I'll, I'll discuss that with Mr. Swingle, and we'll, you know, we'll take it under advisement. I can't promise you he'll be here, but I, I'll take it.
Just a thought. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Byrne.
Hi, Liam Burns from Union Hotel Group. I wanted to provide a, a public update on a recent achievement of the team. First off, I want to thank the council at the previous meeting for granting an extension for negotiation, the redevelopment agreement. As the council knows, and the public knows, there's a lot of moving pieces with this project. And we're continuing to explore every possible avenue to find grant funding and other state, federal, et cetera, ways to support the project. So appreciate the council recognizing this is an ongoing effort, and that we are trying to work very diligently to go to perhaps deeper pockets than the borough here before we come and, and, you know, negotiate the redevelopment agreement. So first of all, I want to thank, thank the council for that. Secondly, we're very, very excited to announce that we have completed objective number two of our designation as the redeveloper. And that is that we closed on the Benzi Restaurant last week. And when we talked with the council two weeks ago, we said we are still going to meet the original deadline for completing that acquisition of Benzi. And very proud that we did that last Monday. So we are, as soon as we get done here, we're gonna run off. Tomorrow was the deadline. We're, we're a week early then. So, so we're very excited now with, with the hotel property taken care of with the liquor license. Of course, Benzi was our, was our backup plan for the liquor license, but those two being the major elements of the project. And now we can turn our attention to, to the redevelopment agreement. So just want to share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Lewis and Robert have some comments.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. Is there anyone who hasn't spoken who would like to? Okay, Robert.
Okay, Officer Shore, 47 Broad Street. The number 19, I'd like to address that too. There's, I know it's been tabled for this, this meeting, however, there are statutes which prohibit landlords from charging more than, more than a month and a half's security deposits. And I'm concerned about how this posting additional security may interfere with a landlord's business, in that they're not gonna be able to charge additional. So I just ask you to consider this in whatever you're doing, you're drafting this all the same.
The neighborhood is just passed back in April. So I mean, it doesn't, it's not adding anything new. And most, and all we're really doing is making some clerical amendments to it, just to make it a little bit more readable. So sure, someone in the future need to read over it that there, you know, there's no, there's no misinterpretation of the meaning.
Okay. And that's the, the only other thing I had was, why did the adminants weren't put out in time such you could approve them tonight? I'm just trying to get an understanding of that.
Just administratively, there was a lot going on over the past couple of weeks. And so they didn't, and they were particularly voluminous. And they were issued late last week. And it was just, was not enough time for all of us to go through them and make any suggested, any suggestions for changes.
Has the format changed from where the minutes are done?
No, the person has changed, you know? I mean, we're, and, and, and so, you know, we're just getting into the routine. And we'll do that. And it'll all be, it'll all be handled, you know, efficiently going forward.
That was Stewart, 26 Spring Street. Yes, I wanted to ask if there's some way that you can require and enforce the garbage contractor putting the garbage receptacles on the lawn or the sidewalk. When we've had these windy days, and it was garbage coming.